Mayor Coombs?
Here.
Mayor, Councilmember Bagley?
Here.
Christensen?
Here.
Finley?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Peck?
Santos?
May we have a quorum?
Okay, before we get started, Councilmember Santos would like to make a statement.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor Coombs. As most of you know, I'm a bookkeeper, so the Longmont Emergency Unit has retained me as their bookkeeper. So if anything should come up throughout the year regarding the LEU, I will recuse myself from any such proceeding.
All right.
Just wanted to make that statement, as our city attorney advised me to.
We will now begin our open forum. Each member of the public will have five minutes to share their thoughts about anything on their minds. Please state your name and address before you begin speaking. I think, before we get started, though, we should do the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Laughter). Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Good job, Mayor.
Okay, the first person that's signed up is Carol Peterson.
You can sit down.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, or stand.
This is in response to the mayor's survey from last year. I filled out the survey and answered the question regarding law enforcement, which prompted me to answer no to that one. When I moved here in 2013 at age 79, I thought it would be wise to take a local driving exam and paid over $100 for a state-certified exam and earned an A+. During that time, the instructor had pointed out to me that we were entering Main Street and to be sure and take notice of the 25 mile-an-hour signs, as the city is very particular about that. It needs to, I live in Village Place, which you know is on the corner of Sixth and Main. It needs to be renamed the Indy 500, as I'm making the guess the average speed is at least 40 miles per hour. There are five signs on each side of Main Street clearly stating no cruising, as well as the 25 mile-per-hour signs. I live on the first floor, facing Main, and wonder why the cars, and worse yet, the horrendous motorcycles, are allowed to race all day and night while I have to listen to the extreme mufflers or whatever it takes to make the loudest and competitive noise. I come from Arizona, living in a beautiful, quiet community, and I'm sad that the tenants where I live do not have the luxury of being able to enjoy the wonderful spring and fall fragrant fresh air, as we cannot open our windows because of the noise and pollution. Some time ago, I saw electric speed reminders in two different quiet residential neighborhoods. I would like to suggest you might put them where they could do some good, and as the music man might say, "Right here in River City." What really troubles me is I sit here day after day and night watching the racers and have never seen any police enforcement. So whatever happened to the 25 mile-per-hour city that the city is so particular about? Hey, Longmont, how about enforcing some of our laws? Main is a busy pedestrian district with people walking and children in strollers. My friend and I happened to be in the middle of the pedestrian walkway one evening when we heard a horrible screech of brakes which stopped within about three feet of us, and we're just lucky we're not dead. To put my mouth where my letter is, I invite you to come and observe from my living room anytime and any day at your convenience. I will mention weekends seem to be somewhat more active. Just one more question, does Longmont have a no bicycles on downtown streets rule posted? If not, I definitely think they should be, and I just hope that I'm not the only person who's really concerned about this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. I hope there's a posting that there's no, they try to discourage people from riding their bicycles on the sidewalks downtown, but I think it's still legal to ride a bicycle on the street, on Main Street.
They're very, very hazardous. They zoom along
Yeah.
amidst the pedestrians.
Well, yeah, I agree, they are a hazard to pedestrians. I totally agree.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Peck?
Ms. Peterson, I agree that maybe it is time to do some kind of a speed monitor on Main Street. I've been down there as well, trying to cross in the crosswalk, and there's no way they slow down. So, and I was also fell off my bike on Main Street because they weren't paying attention to who was in the crosswalk. So we should probably request that we do, just as a reminder to people going, that we do have a speed limit.
I would like that. Like I said, I think the electronic things, I know I see those all the time, and I thought, why don't we ever get one down on Sixth and Main Street where the heaviest traffic and the noisiest traffic? So it's just been an issue of mine, and I care about safety.
Yeah. Please stand closer to the mic so the rest of the people can hear you.
I sound a big voice, I didn't know that were true. Anyway, thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you. Mike Schnatzmeyer?
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and Council. My name is Mike Schnatzmeyer, 12001 Twilight Street, Longmont. As a citizen concerned about smart growth and sustainability, I came to speak specifically regarding my concerns about the proposed South Flat Annexation coming before you later this month. This annexation should be denied as it currently stands, as being out of compliance with due process and simply because it is bad for the St. Frank River and for the city's development. I state this for the following reasons. First, a river runs through it. 100 years ago, the historic St. Frank River was located and ran directly through this annexation site. It returned during the 13 flood event, and it will return again during future extreme flood events. This reality is reflected in historic maps and demonstrated by the actual events of the 2013 flood. Yet no mention of this fact was made in the annexation application, nor presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. When P&amp;Z Commissioners asked staff about this in response to my public comments, they were told rivers meander. This is simply not what happened in this case, as the river was redirected to a smaller channel on higher ground a half-mile away by human activity. It did not meander here. The main historic river channel historically flowed through the middle of the proposed annexation, and this fact needs to be clearly, honestly, and openly addressed. Secondly, due process has been preempted. The original annexation concept plan showed over 40 acres of existing gravel ponds to remain as currently zoned for park, greenway, and open space, and to be left intact as ponds. Only after the fact of the required public neighborhood meetings was this concept plan radically altered to now show these ponds as being filled with dirt and rezoned for residential housing. This impacts more than one-half of the entire property and has radically changed the nature of the proposal. This substantial change should be subject to public comment as part of the due process, but it was not, and many adjacent property owners are still today completely unaware of this potentially harmful change. This alteration is especially significant when one understands the first fact, that a river runs through this area. A vague reference in the application regarding the developer working with the city on flood mitigation is commendable, but recognition of the historic river channel referred to as the split-flow option is not indicated whatsoever on the concept plan. The current plan as it stands is likely a Trojan horse, submitted with a hidden goal and agenda of filling the ponds with dirt to develop streets and housing directly on top of the historic river channel, an unmitigated disaster. The third reason for denial, 1 million cubic yards of fill dirt. This is the amount of material necessary to fill the ponds, enough to fill this entire building 100 times over. The impact of trucking and placing over 1 million cubic yards of fill would create tremendous visual, auditory, and traffic impacts on the neighbors, the neighborhood and city streets, yet was never presented publicly for comment. Filling the ponds with dirt would put the neighborhood in increased risk during flood events, and this material generated from widening the St. Frank River channel should be considered as a city asset, worth millions of dollars in its market value, rather than to be utilized for the direct benefit of a private developer without public oversight. If the annexation legitimately serves to restore the historic St. Frank with a split-flow channel, that would be another matter. If an easement for a split-flow channel was stipulated as a specific condition of annexation, this would provide benefit to the city. While there are still potential issues with such a construction and its impacts, I could support this type of development and any appropriate use of fill material. However, as currently submitted with alterations that have not been subject to public review and scrutiny, the proposal is earmarks of a Trojan horse, pretending to be what it is not. I consider that the proposal to be a bait and switch conceived after public review. It threatens to have a huge negative impact on the neighborhood and the St. Frank River that will be permanently irreversible. As it now stands, without additional public review, the annexation should be denied at this time. This is equivalent to a hotel coming in and saying they're going to build a four-story hotel on half of a property, open space on the other half, and then after public review saying, "We're going to build a two-story building on the entire site." That's what's going on, and to make it worse, it's the site of the old historic river corridor. I am providing Council with copies of my comments, and will follow up with additional documentation materials via email after tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peck?
Mike, where is this property?
The South Flat Annexation is west of Hoover Road and north of Rogers Grove. It's generally northwest of the Boulder County Fairgrounds parking lot, and it's due west of Rogers Grove.
Dale, can I ask you a question? Hello. When you showed us all of the maps about the flood mitigation, and is this the same property that I asked you about where those two ponds are? And my concern about filling those ponds in and not using that for a split-flow going under Hoover, connecting with the St. Frank further down?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Peck, you're correct. It is the property that's immediately north of Rogers Road, west of Hoover, and that is the area where we have studied having a split-flow on the river. As Mr. Schnatzmeyer noted, in the 2013 flood, the river did split there because the main channel didn't have the capacity to carry the flows, and so we are very hard looking at, not only at the feasibility, but what I consider to be the likelihood of a split-flow happening there, because it does several things. One is, it avoids us having to replace the bridge on Hoover.
Right.
It avoids as much impact on the Rogers Grove area, as well as upstream of Hoover on the St. Frank near Golden Ponds, and so we very much anticipate that there will be a split-flow. I have not personally seen the latest versions of the annexation documents, but I certainly have been involved in discussions and meetings on that with the applicant, and it is my belief and understanding that a portion of the excess material that's going to be coming out of the Resilience St. Frank project could be placed in a portion of the ponds. I don't believe I've seen a plan that shows all of the ponds being filled. I think I've seen plans that show a channel being created, sort of similar to Lykan's Gulch downstream of Airport Road towards the river. And so I appreciate Mr. Schnatzmeyer's vigilance in looking at that, but I can assure him that it's also very much what we're looking at as staff in Public Works as well.
So is that the information that you would be giving to Planning and Zoning as well, or to the annexation process?
I'm going to look to my colleague, Joanie, because I'm not as familiar with the P&amp;Z process.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck, so the South Flat Annexation went to Planning Commission last month. You will probably see it sometime in March or April, it won't be this month. And so Planning Commission has seen the application, reviewed it, is forwarding their recommendation to you, and also had an extensive presentation, similar but much more lengthy than what Dale presented this evening from Nick Wolfram regarding the split-flow channel and the options for ponds to potentially be filled. Also, keep in mind that neighborhood meetings are just that, they're neighborhood meetings. Those plans can and do often change from a neighborhood meeting, and that is perfectly acceptable through our planning process. We actually expect things to change after the neighborhood meeting by taking public input, so, again, I'd anticipate you guys seeing this application sometime closer to March.
And those neighborhood meetings would come before the application to us?
The neighborhood meetings have occurred probably
They're done.
...a year and a half ago, so some significant, significant time has passed since we brought you the referral and we move forward with that package of annexations. So we have the South Flat, the Redmond Neighbors, and the Irwin-Thomas Annexations, and those are all working their way through Planning Commission right now.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Okay, next up is Brian Johnston.
Hi, my name is Brian Johnston. I reside at 926 Kaufman Street, and I've been attending meetings, I think I've only missed two in the last six months, and kind of immersed myself a lot in Longmont since moving here approximately a year ago. And having lived in a lot of cities, having always attended city council meetings from towns of 5,000 up to cities of 3 million that I've lived in, I have to, you know, and also someone who's studied both political science on your side and public administration on the city staff's side in graduate school, I have to say overall that Longmont's a well-run city. Your staff with Harold, or Sean, or Eugene, or Dale, they've always been very professional, very helpful, very courteous to me as a citizen and just as someone who was curious. I understand the city's going through some growth pains, as kind of the gentleman spoke before me brought up, but overall, I see that the roads are well, my public utilities are well, and in regards to public utilities, there's next light, which is, simply put, one of the greatest things I've seen a municipality pull off in all my studies, where the voters had the foresight to pass this, the staff did an excellent job of implementing it, and the council for supporting both of those and getting it done. And so everyone, all three groups deserve praise for that. I was very impressed with your sustainability plan that was passed last month, I believe it was, and also, you know, having grown up in basically Appalachia, and then living in the southeast, back up into the mid-Atlantic region, I find that Longmont's a very hospitable community in terms of multiculturalism. You know, I've lived in communities that were very divided by usually race, sometimes religion.
Also, keep in mind that neighborhood meetings are just that, they're neighborhood meetings. Those plans can and do often change from a neighborhood meeting, and that is perfectly acceptable through our planning process. We actually expect things to change after the neighborhood meeting by taking public input. So again, I'd anticipate you guys seeing this application sometime closer to March.
And those neighborhood meetings would come before the application to us?
The neighborhood meetings have occurred probably a year and a half ago.
Okay.
So some significant, significant time has passed since we brought you the referral, and we move forward with that package of annexations. So we have the South Flat, the Redmond Neighbors, and the Irwin-Thomas annexations, and those are all working their way through Planning Commission right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up is Brian Johnston.
Hi, my name is Brian Johnston. I reside at 926 Kaufman Street. And I've been attending meetings, I think I've only missed two in the last six months, and kind of immersed myself a lot in Longmont since, since moving here approximately a year ago. And having lived in a lot of cities, having always attended city council meetings from towns of 5,000 up to cities of 3 million that I've lived in, I have to, you know, and also someone who's studied both political science on your side and public administration on the city staff's side in graduate school, I have to say overall that Longmont's a well-run city. Your staff with Harold, or Sean, or Eugene, or Dale, they've always been very professional, very helpful, very courteous to me as a citizen and just as someone who was curious. I understand the city's going through some growth pains, as kind of the gentleman spoke before me brought up, but overall, I see that the roads are well, my public utilities are, are well. And, and in regards to public utilities, there's Next Light, which is, simply put, one of the greatest things I've seen a municipality pull off in all my studies, where the voters had the foresight to pass this, the staff did an excellent job of implementing it, and the council for supporting both of those and getting it done. And, and so everyone, all three groups deserve praise for that. I was very impressed with your sustainability plan that was passed last month, I believe it was. And, and also, you know, having grown up in basically Appalachia, and then living in the southeast, back up into the mid-Atlantic region, I find that Longmont's a very hospitable community in terms of multiculturalism. You know, I've lived in communities that were very divided by usually race, sometimes religion, other whatever conceptual boxes you want to put people in. But, you know, it pleased me around Halloween, when I was walking downtown most evenings, and I saw all the Dia de los Muertos decor and things up. And then about a month and a half ago, shortly after the election, when you guys held a special session in regards to some comments and some concern, comments that have been made, and concerns that citizens had in regards to what was hap, what is happening on a larger level affecting us here within Longmont. And you addressed that, and you deserve credit for that. And just overall, I just want to say in the year I've been here, I'm really impressed with Longmont, and I think you guys, and I think the city staff overall do a very good job. I know I've been critical on you on a couple of things, but aside from those, I haven't seen anything too irrational come out of you guys. So, and I just wanted to say thanks to you all and the staff for your public service. That's it.
Well, thanks.
Do you want to keep speaking?
He can have 10 minutes.
Karen Dyke, 708 Hayden Court. And Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, I will second that we do, I have similar feelings that Longmont is really a great place to live, and I think it's that way because of the forward-thinking that we've done on this council. I just have a question for you tonight. In December, there was discussion about having an open forum to address the oil and gas activities after the study session, and I was wondering if there's a plan for that yet. My thought after that meeting was that that was going to occur in January, and I haven't seen any provision made for that yet.
Well, Broomfield's going through the exact same thing, so we thought we'd kind of wait and see how their open forum went, see what we can learn, and then decide after that what we're going to do.
Okay.
So it's, it's not on our schedule right, right now.
Okay. We gave you a list of questions, and we're just sort of wondering the plan to get back to the community after those questions.
Well, I know a lot of those questions are public health questions, so, you know, we don't have the expertise to even answer a lot of them, so they, you know, if we have an open forum, we'd have to involve probably Boulder Public Health. I don't know if you want to add a few comments?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we've received those questions, and we have been talking about that as staff in terms of how we could structure it. As we've been having those conversations, one of the things that we did notice is that Broomfield is, is having an open forum. That's also including the COGCC and CDPE. As you indicated, a number of questions on there were health-related, and we felt that it would be appropriate to try to get the agencies that are best able to answer those questions attend. So what our desire is as staff, and what we were talking about, is to see what happens in the, in the Broomfield meeting, see what they did well, see what they didn't do well. Hopefully, they do everything well, and we can copy it, but then come back and, and bring that forward to council.
I would, I would ask that maybe also, there was just a recent study that was done on the level of air pollution here, the results just came out, and that was after the flyovers that occurred. I think it was called the FRAP study, and they did flyovers, and, and there was a lot of information that came out about the amount of air pollution and ozone in the area, and how does the ozone form, and how are winds shifting related to that. It might be good to invite somebody from that study as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ryan?
Hold on.
Excuse me. Councilmember Christiansen?
Thank you, Karen, and thank you for reminding us about that. And I do think that we, there are also things going on in Lafayette regarding fracking, and so it would be good to see, to, to go to some of those events and see what they're doing, and then follow up with that. Because they, we do, you know, we, we did vote more than 50% to actually uphold that, and even though that did not happen with the state Supreme Court, there's still people in town who would like to see that happen.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Karen, who put out that study, so if we wanted to look at it?
It was from Ann Carr, I believe, I'll send it to the line.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So tonight's discussion night, so I just wanted to, a lot of times, people say, "Why do you say that?" You didn't have to. I just wanted you to know what I'm thinking. So the, the, the oil and gas topic is, it's a tough one for me. The, I kind of feel like a boxer, that we had to fight, you know, we fought the, the city regs, you know, we won that one. Personally, I was exhausted, right? Then we had to go fight another one, you know, which was the Charter Amendment, you know, we lost that one. And then so I feel, not believe, think, but I feel, you know, the, the idea of engaging in another fight, I'm exhausted, you know, just, just being honest, right? And so, me personally, I don't know when it's going to happen, but, and I know that I would feel disingenuous if I sat up here quiet going, "Oh yeah, I want that, let's go, let's go." The, unfortunately, the, I think that we've, we've, there's only so much I think we can do at a local level now, meaning that we can talk about health studies, we can talk about, we can all agree, and we have twice, with our city regs and the Charter Amendment, that we wanted certain things to happen with fracking. And we can have a talk, but until our state legislature, or until our Supreme Court does something, we can't ban it, we can't have moratoriums. Even if we did, it would end in a matter of days, and we would be sanctioned for attorney fees. And so until people with greater power at a higher level than we have actually do something, we can have forums, but my concern is that we'll have the forum, but what will happen? And so my question back at you would be, why do we want a forum, and what would we as citizens want to accomplish?
Can I express that real quickly? I think, I think a couple things. One is that there's a feeling in the, in the community that we don't know where and when and how much fracking's going to be here. And the reason the Broomfield citizens are so upset is that they thought they were going to have four well sites with about five wells on each site, and it's going to be four, up to 40 on each site, and they're going to have 160 wells really close to their communities. And so I think that that's part of the fear that's in the community, and I think that that's something that this council can help dispel. And I think the other thing I would like to see is how can we, as people in this area that know what is out there in the form of air pollution, not to talk to the COGCC because their mission says that they're there to promote oil and gas activities? But how about the different cities and counties up here banning together and going to the legislature with us as citizens and saying, "You have to do something. You have to do something about the air pollution up here." And I think that we're, we're pretty much being ignored as citizens, but I think if we, together with Boulder City Council, the city of Boulder, and they're also very frightened in Boulder about the possibility of getting fracked, if we would talk with Broomfield and Lafayette and Lewisville, Loveland, and say, "How can, how can we slow this down so that we don't have health effects?" I think that's what I would like to see.
You're wrong. It's not pretty much, it's absolutely.
Yeah, yes. Okay, thank you.
Well, I'd like to add on a few comments. You know, I'm a very pragmatic person, and, you know, I think it's my engineering background that, you know, I like to see, here's a problem that we can solve, and, and, you know, then I run, you know, 100 miles an hour to try to solve it, but when problems that are out of our purview to solve, it's tough to, because, you know, we did all get emotionally wrapped around, and I think we did an excellent job with our, our own city regs. I think we pushed right up to the red line without crossing the line, and that was proven in court, that's why we won, basically. So I think, you know, we, we did an excellent job there. And, you know, we do have a contractual obligation with our current provider that I think is actually a step above, you know, it's very easy to work with, has some great ideas on how to actually do things better, safer, with less disturbances. And, you know, we never really know how many wells we're going to drill unless we do that survey, so I'm kind of thinking that might be something that we would want to support because we don't know, I mean, they may do the survey and decide they don't need to drill any wells, I mean. So, but anyway, so I kind of agree a lot with what Brian was saying, that, you know, I hope people don't think that because we have this moratorium, or this forum, rather, excuse me, this open forum, that we're going to have solutions that everybody's going to be happy with, because other than, you know, the benefit is, is just having the citizens know that we care and that we're willing to listen, but other than that, there may not be a whole lot we can actually do but honor our, you know, current contractual obligation, and I guess that's about it. So I guess our next speaker is Ryan Rivas.
Hello again. Ryan Rivas, 817 in Cordial Circle. And what I'm here to speak about is the same topic that I was here to speak about last week, and that is the problem of homelessness. Last week, I spoke a little bit to the camping bans and tried to give three reasons as to why I think personally the camping bans are a bad idea. I tried to give a moral argument, which I think is probably the best reason, but not, reason doesn't always seem to go across for whatever reason. Morally, I think it's wrong to have camping bans because it is just wrong to make, to ticket, fine, and in most cases jail someone for doing what they are forced to do. So I think that is wrong to do in that case. I think it's impractical, these things don't work, these kind of systems, these kind of laws that aggressively attack the homeless population don't work, they don't push people to services, they don't help people get out of poverty, they only in fact further, further, further their plight in, in poverty and homelessness. And thirdly, I tried to present a financial argument that said that we are simply wasting money, simply wasting money enforcing these kind of policies because they don't work, and they're not any, taking steps towards the right direction. So I alluded a little bit last week a bit to solutions, and what I want to talk about this week is some solutions. And first, to understand the solutions, we have to understand homelessness for what it is. It is not an individual problem, it is not a community problem, this is not a Colorado problem, this is a societal problem. And as such, we have to come together as a society to solve them, to address them. It is not going to be up till, it's, Longmont by themselves is not going to solve the problem of homelessness. Colorado by itself is not going to solve the problem of homelessness. It is only when we come together as communities, and come together as cities to address these sort of problems, and have progressive solutions, that we can start making steps towards a better path. And so what I, what I, what I urge for the first part is the long, what I, what I hope and urge the city council to do is to come out in favor of the Right to Rest Act. Where's this camera at? Right here. The Right to Rest Act, which is going through the state legislator, legislature this year, and has tried to already go past the past two years, failed the first time, almost passed the second time, let's cross our fingers for a third time to charm. Now what this would do would have, would, would provide state laws, statewide regulations that allow people to be homeless, that allow people to be poor, instead of criminalizing from what they are. That's the first step. And it would be great to see Longmont come out, as other speakers here have spoken out too, this is out, Longmont is a place of fight, and is a place of being a model. So let's come out and stand up and be a model for Colorado and the rest of our communities around us, coming out in support of the, the Right to Rest Act going through the state legislature. Let us get in contact as a further step with the other communities around our area. There are similar conversations going on right this second in Boulder, city council discussions, talking about what to do about the homeless problem there. There are regulations in all these other, in all these other, in Fort Collins, in Boulder, in Denver, they're all, they're all facing the same problems. So I urge Longmont City Council to join in the fight together, let us reach out to our communities around us, and urge them to join in the fight against homelessness, and stop this war on poverty and homelessness that the communities around us have fallen into, and that hopefully we don't fall into ourselves. And so with this, with this coming out, and what I, which I hope the city council decides to do, come out in support of the state, the Right to Rest Act, I alluded last week against to changing narrative around homelessness. The reason this is still a problem, because the narrative around homelessness, the way that we view it is still, has very negative connotation, a very pejorative stereotype is associated with being homeless, which is why people are more ready to walk by them and spit on them, tell them to get a job, than reach out a hand and grab them a coat. So let's stop doing that. Let us stop demonizing them. These people are people that could be your son and daughter. I met a guy on the street the other day when I was doing outreach in Boulder, who had got into his fight with this, kid was 18 years old, got into a fight with his parents and decided to run away and go to Colorado, just up and leave. So these people could be, so this kid is on the brink of getting in perpetual homelessness, or hopefully finding his feet and getting along with this. But the point is, is that these people could be anybody, and it is our job to, to make sure when, when they fall into those systems, that we have, that we have the kinds of things that will help them get out, rather than push them further down. So in closing, I just want to say, I, I earnestly urge and hope that the city council will come out in support of the Right to Rest Act, and come out in support of 21st century solutions to these problems that have been plaguing us in America for the, our entire history. Thank you.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Combs, and I'm glad you came back, because last time you said similar things, and I, I found it interesting. So let me ask you a couple of questions, because I'd be curious to hear, I, I don't disagree with everything you said, right? So let's just think, what, so what happens if we lift the camping ban, right? I completely understand that if someone doesn't, can't afford a place to sleep, making it criminal to rest, that makes sense, right? So what happens if we now don't have a camping ban, okay? And kids wanted to camp in the park, or I wanted to camp in the park, right? Meaning that there's no difference. So that would be my first question, what, what then? Or the other issue is, what happens if all of a sudden, you know, a homeless city pops up in Roosevelt Park, right? Whereas I would, everything you're saying, yes, we have to protect the rights of even those in our community that are homeless. But I, what about the property values and the rights of those who live around the park that are all of a sudden dealing with, you know, land use that they didn't anticipate? So what, how do, how do we deal with that? How do we, what's the balance?
Okay, in response to your first question, I would say that these kind of laws are not targeted at you and your family.
Right.
They're targeted at the homeless population, and they are, they are under guise of, we're going to push people to services by, by getting them off the streets, but they're not. No one's going to these services, not very many people are going to the services, not many people are getting better. These policies are, are targeted at homeless people to get them out of our communities.
So, so you're saying that the odds of kids or me going and camping in the park are slim, so?
Go for it. Got it. Go for it.
Okay, all right.
And in response to your second question, yes, if, as, as I think the Business Coalition pointed out, and as the Hope Outreach Center here has also pointed out, since offering services here in Longmont, the, the homeless population has increased. But I just want to point something out, that's what happens when you offer people help. People who need help are going to come towards the help. So, but this is, this is the key here, this is not a Longmont problem, and once we start addressing it as a, as a society, as a state, we can start, we can start spreading that burden financially and spatially out throughout the entire state, out throughout the entire country, let's look long-term, let's hope. But that, yes, so there will be, when we, when we, if we don't have camping bans, people will come here and camp. That is because in every other place, they are not allowed to camp there. They get ticketed, they get harassed, they get woken up at 3:00 in the morning on a negative 15-degree day and told to get out, to go find somewhere else, so they have nowhere else to go. We, we jump in with the camping bans, they're not going to be anywhere else. So yes, if we do, they will come.
So you're saying, but you're, so you're, what I heard you say was, yeah, so you're, you're ac- acquiescing that if we drop the camping ban, then we might get those pockets, but you're also saying that if everybody throughout the United States lifts the camping bans, you wouldn't have camp cities just in Longmont because you, they'd be able to go anywhere and everywhere and live and?
No, sir. That, that was not my point. My point is that the repealing the camping bans on a statewide level is a first step towards a more progressive solutions and better solutions.
Right, right.
After lifting the camping ban, that's not, that's not the end of the problem. Homeless is not just going to magically disappear because people can legally sleep everywhere. What's, what's next are progressive policies, making affordable housing for people, building up, building, building up and building more, making houses, more houses for people to live in. And it's also been shown, you know, I, you know, I heard someone mention that being financially savvy or caring about finances, like I mentioned last week, there's been studies in North Carolina that come out that show housing the homeless actually costs less money, costs the city less money.
I'm turning off.
If we have space, which we do, we have a ton of.
I'm turning off my mic, but I just want to say thank you as you continue talking.
Well, and if you didn't have any other questions, that's, that's pretty much my whole spiel.
Councilmember Beck.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So what I, what I'm hearing you saying, and to address Councilman Bagley's concerns about people camping all over the city, is that we do have a designated campsite at the fairgrounds. If, if you lift, or if you do Right to Rest and, and that passes, do you think it would be possible for a city to, to designate a specific campsite only rather than open up every single park?
Sure. You know, I think that'd be a good step in the future. I think the fear maybe is just kind of like taking our homeless, rounding them up, putting in one spot. But the kind of encampments like those are a very real possibility, and those are the kinds of things that I think people are looking for. You know, and maybe not just a camping area, but little, you know, tenting areas, little tiny home housing areas. They don't even have to be crazy tiny homes, just a roof. Someone wants a roof. That's all they really want at night. But, I'm sorry.
But, you know, even for people who have homes, they can't camp everywhere. There are designated camping spots.
Sure.
For people who, so just treating the, treating everybody equally, everybody can camp in a designated camping spot. I don't see any problem with that. That's equality. But what I'm hearing you saying, and I totally agree with, is that we need a policy of transition, and it has to be sustainable.
Yes, ma'am.
And I totally agree with that.
And I think the only way to do it is jumping on higher levels of community, state level, hopefully national level. But, so I hope to see the city council.
Thank you.
Come up behind the Rights, the Rights to Rest Act here in Colorado. There's a kickoff event the twenty-seventh here in Denver, so I don't know. If anybody's planning on attending, but there it is.
Well, thank you. One, it's not a question, but an, an observation that I think this, this city council, I think everybody on the city council understands that being poor and homeless is not a crime and it shouldn't be criminalized.
Sure.
And that's why we, we changed some of our outdated regulations recently about panhandling, you know, that, because that's freedom of speech. And so, you know, I'm, I'm just really glad that we have people that understand, at least that is, is a big step that a lot of cities don't even have that understanding.
Yes, sir. Of course. And, you know, I see a lot of nodding heads, and I, I'm very grateful to see those kind of things. And I'm not doubting Longmont. And, and you know, it's not, for, for most cities, it's not, it's not a right, it's not a matter of wanting to criminalize the homeless knowingly. It's people that want to get rid of the litter, that want to get rid of the clutter, that want to get rid of the, the unsafe aspects that surround the homeless problem. But camping bans are not the right way. They're short-term Band-Aid for a very deep wound that's not going to go away.
We don't have one.
Deep wound?
No, we don't have a camping ban in Longmont.
Oh, right, right, right. I'm just, yeah, I'm just saying.
Councilmember Christiansen?
I just wanted to let you know that it's not just those of us on the council, but really throughout Boulder County, people are working on this. Joni Marsh, who's head of planning over there, is head of, is on the ten-year plan to end homelessness, which is a throughout Boulder County plan. And it, it is, as you know, it's a difficult problem, and this has been true since the eighties when the government stopped investing in, in building housing and since the government eliminated a lot of mental healthcare centers. And so that's part of the problem. The other problem is, is economics, which has created all kinds, you know, that's why you can't afford a home. But people really are concerned about this. And, and there is a, we have a homelessness assessment, report that will be coming before this council in the next month. And there, in, in that, there is a program, I think it's in New Mexico, which does set up a campground. In fact, even G. Fine Park in Boulder was a campground for, basically during the depression, for basically everybody who was broke. That's why they built a large public restroom that also had rooms for people to wash dishes and things like that. So this has been done before. We have to figure out a way to do this in a way, but also transition people because the longer you're homeless, the more traumatized you are. So the faster you can get people, especially children and, and young people out of this, the better off you'll be because it's so traumatizing, then people start getting into self-medicating with, you know, that just becomes another whole problem.
Yes, ma'am.
So it, it is a very difficult problem that has many, many aspects. There are many kinds of homeless populations, from people who are just out of a job and are suddenly homeless, to people who've been out of, who've been homeless for twenty years. And those are very different kinds of folks to help. But, you know, we, we are as a county and as a state trying to do things, and we appreciate what you're trying to do too.
I appreciate that. And I appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Alec Chrisifoli.
Mayor Coombs, good job on the name pronunciation. So yeah, my name's Alec Chrisifoli. I live at six twenty-three Robert Street here in Longmont. And I'll keep this short and sweet. I just want to say I was really glad to see the citizen satisfaction survey results that were recently published, and was especially glad to see the question regarding lifting the ban on retail cannabis sales, which it looked like a majority of the citizens in the survey were in favor of. And I would just like to add my voice to that. Having grown up here in Longmont, I've noticed, especially in the last few years, a recent trend of really embracing local businesses and keeping our citizens' money here in the city, you know, doing work for us. And I would like to see that continue by lifting this ban, just because it seems like a lot of that money that could be staying here is going to places like Boulder, Lafayette, places like that. And I truly think that it would add to quality jobs here in Longmont as well as positive culture and useful revenue for the city. So I would just like to, again, say thank you for putting that question on the ballot and for your consideration in lifting that ban. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
There's an interesting article today in the Denver Post about two cities that were kind of front and center in marijuana that, I was shocked that they had like about a million dollars worth of sales tax for cities of about five thousand people. So, next up is, Councilmember Christiansen.
Oh, I just wanted to say to, where are you, Mr. Chris? And I don't have your spelling, so Chrisifoli? I don't know. I'm doing the best I can given that I don't know your name. Just so you don't think we're kind of ignoring this thing, we originally, Councilwoman Finley brought this back, and then we talked about it, and then we let it go for a while, and then I brought it back. And the thing is that there are, there are so many things going on on a statewide basis right now that I think we're reluctant to start making rules until we, until the state figures out what to do because there's, it's, it would be a waste of our time and money in a, in a way to start setting up a mechanism for doing this and then have to pull back and then change it again and change it again. So we're waiting until the state starts straightening out some rules, which I've been told by Representative Jonathan Singer.
I think you might be confusing the home grow regulation versus what he was talking about was just opening up the retail and medical.
No, I mean, they're doing all kinds of things. And so, you know, we, we are going to bring that back, and I, I think we're all aware that the majority of people in Longmont would like to see both retail and, I mean, recreational and medical marijuana available. But there are a lot of people who don't want to see that too, so, you know. Anyway, that will be coming back, I'm sure, this year, so.
Hopefully sooner than later. Okay, Mar- Marcia Martin.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Marcia Martin. I live at twelve oh nine South Emery Street in Longmont. And I think we should all acknowledge that regardless of, of party, we're entering a different era of politics now. And in this new era, contrary to what some members of the council have stated today, we have to recognize that constructive civic, civic action occurs mostly at the municipal and state level because there is no way for us to act contravening the federal government at this point. They hold all the cards, and they have an agenda that's probably going to take four years, and we just have to get things done other ways. Fortunately, Longmont is a well-run city, and there is broad consensus about a number of things. We want to all protect our civil and human rights. We want our citizens to be safe and protected, and we want to preserve the environment in our beloved front-range cities and our beautiful climate. I think we were all disappointed when the Colorado Supreme Court overturned our local laws constraining the use of fracking and other fossil fuel activity. Now we are seeing elsewhere activity which, if it comes to Colorado, and we do know that egregious legislation has a way of propagating from state to state, these laws could further threaten our ability for cities to regulate industry within their boundaries. And I just want to bring some of those up. In Wyoming, a measure which forbids utilities from providing electricity to the state from large-scale wind or solar plants was introduced last week in the state legislature of our adjacent city of Wyoming, a state of Wyoming. They represent, the legislators who introduced this represent Wyoming's top coal-producing counties, and they are climate change deniers. We need to beware of things like this going on. In Washington State, State Senator Doug Erickson reportedly plans to support a bill defining any protest against drilling or fracting activity or plant siting as environmental terrorism, thus increasing the penalties for civic, civil disobedience to a felony. Acts of protests even that threaten jobs or interfere with commerce, which in my book is not terrorism, can be defined as environmental terrorism by this proposal. And it is just something that we have to beware of. Again, it's happening in, in neighboring states, and we, it would be good for Longmont to consider taking proactive action. The front-range states need to consider taking similar proactive actions so that we can force the hand of the state legislature in protecting against us, against this kind of activity. We don't expect these measures to pass, but we don't know what's going to happen to them either. And the fact that they're out there is a warning. I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of that. Colorado should take action proactively to avoid being caught by legislative traps like this. Tonight in the city of Lafayette, just to the south, a bill that protects citizen activists protesting oil and gas development from, including fracking, from arrest is enjoying its first reading. This bill is controversial, and its opponents are saying that the bill won't stand up in court. The bill, I'll send the references to all of you by email after this.
No, no, just in general, what's the bill saying?
Oh, the bill makes some, has some general languages, deploring the use of fracking and similar methods, and stating that the homeable cities should have a defense against that. And then it outlaws the use of city facilities like police to harass and, and detain environmental protesters. So again, it's a, it's a legal protection against laws that define people who do these kinds of civil disobedience as terrorists. It, it basically is, is the direct opposite of the, of the Washington State proposal. Okay? So this bill is controversial. I'm not going to hide that from anybody. Oh, talked for a long time. Okay, I just think, I would like Longmont to consider the bill, and I, I think it's really important that people need to, we need to put as many obstacles in the way of, of oil and gas messing with our environment as we can. Straw men, that they may be, they still have to be knocked down.
Well, I'll just add a couple of comments, you know. The city of Longmont's a great place with renewables. I mean, last year, twenty-nine percent of the energy delivered to our city was from renewable energy. We actually have wind energy in Wyoming as we speak that belongs to us through Flat River. Last, you know, over the last couple of years, we've added seventy megawatts of wind, thirty megawatts of solar. We have a plan to look at another twenty-five megawatts of wind. And then each municipality is looking at the possibility of adding, you know, one to two megawatt solar farms of their own. And we've got a plan to basically divest ourselves from the Craig One plant, so we see that coal's not in our future.
Mm-hmm. I'm, I'm aware of all that, so. And again, I, I, I want a hundred percent renewables to happen as soon as, as it can, and I'm concerned about things happening that will prevent that from happening and allow the oil and gas companies to get a foothold and drag their feet.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anybody else that'd like to come speak? Yeah, come on down and state your name and address.
James Kenworthy, one oh seven Caribou Place. Thanks for letting me talk. Okay, the fracking issue came up. The state constitution says that laws passed by the people trump laws passed by the legislation. It says that. The people, the, the city went to the Supreme Court and got, I'm not sure what happened, but I guess the city got defeated. The people have never been represented at the Supreme Court. Okay, you all swore to uphold the constitution. You need to take a look at what the constitution says, and you probably know better than I do about what I'm talking about. You've done an excellent job of ignoring the issue that the people have never been represented at the, at the state constitution. The city was represented. The city lost. The people have never been represented. So this is far from over. So don't, please stop acting like it's a done deal because it's not. Somehow the people have to get representation at the state, at the Supreme Court. I think I said the constitution a couple of times. The people need to be represented at the Supreme Court for this issue to be resolved. And that's, I didn't come, prepare the talk, I didn't bring in notes or anything, but that's all I had to say. It's not over.
Thank you.
It's far from over.
Is there anybody else that'd like to come down and speak? Councilmember Bagley.
Hey, thanks, Mayor Coombs. And just, and I'm not, I don't necessarily disagree. I know it's not over. But I guess what I'm, no, what I'm saying, for me personally, it's over.
I know you're tired.
Meaning, I, I guess, yeah, what I'm just saying is that as an attorney, I understand the law, I understand where, what I can and cannot do, and, and we ran the course, meaning the race was run, or the race was, was run.
The city ran the course.
I, I, no, I get that. And I'm not saying, and I'm not saying that, and I'm not necessarily.
You need to come back if you're going to be going back and forth.
I just didn't want you to sit down and feel like, you know, you were ignored. The, I, I guess what I'm just saying. The, I, I guess what I'm just saying is that.
I don't feel like that.
Okay, good, good, good. Because it's just that, I, I realize that. I mean, the, there have been two, now three, comments tonight on this issue, and it's quite apparent that, yeah, there are people that, it's not over. You know, I mean, I guess what I'm just saying is that, as a city, the, I don't disagree with you. I'm just saying, as a city, I don't know what else we can do.
Do you, do you agree that this people have not been represented at the Supreme Court?
I disagree with that statement.
You disagree with that?
Meaning that the city of Longmont is the people of Longmont.
No.
Okay.
The, the city did not represent the people at the Supreme Court. The city represented the city.
I, I guess, I guess I would say that it's the same thing.
I, no, I don't think so.
Okay, and we can disagree.
We're going to disagree on that.
Yeah, we can disagree. I just, what I'm saying is that, that I don't know what other, I do know that if there's, if your comment is to be taken as, "We're not done yet, we have not yet begun to fight", I say, "Cool."
All right.
If the comment's to be taken that somehow Eugene May and the city council didn't do everything we could.
No, I'm not saying that.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I completely agree. Go nuts.
Okay, great.
I'm just tired, just, that's it, that's all I'm saying.
Get some rest.
Thanks, Jim.
I tried.
All right, is there anybody else that'd like to speak?
Michael Belmont, I'm 841 Tenacity Drive, and I, I'm not, I'm unprepared to say really much of anything, or I didn't have anything particularly in mind. First, I just want to say, hey, thanks, guys. That's probably the most important thing I would like to convey, but just to follow up on, I think, Mr. Kenworthy's comments, I, I think what perhaps he intended to say was that, that the issue of the constitutional rights of the people was never given an opportunity to be vetted in the court. That day will probably come, hopefully sooner than later. Another aspect of this is that, and I appreciate certainly, Brian, where council member, well, Brian, where you're coming from, and in particular, you're, you all have specific legal constraints within which you must, you perceive that you must operate, and I, I perfectly understand that. I, I watched a documentary last night on King's, Martin Luther, not really King so much as the Civil Rights Movement from '55 to '68. Obviously, it traced the life of King being the centerpiece of that movement. But what, one thing that stands out dramatically is that at so many junctures in that, there, there were laws within which city councils and police sergeants and chiefs of police and government officials felt they had to acquiesce to and conform to, which were simply egregiously in breach of equality and civil rights. And I don't need to elaborate on, on those things, but gradually, there had to be city councils and judges and officials at every level that had to stand up to these nefarious legal decisions and laws and regs and so on. And I'm not, I've been asking you to do that. I, I'm not here to ask you. I, I wasn't even intending to say any of this, really. I think I was just motivated by what was just spoken and riffing off of that, basically. But I would love it if you chose to do that, and I believe you would have most, if not all, of this city behind you if you, if you chose to set, to do some unprecedented things that perhaps would be even historic. But really, I just wanted to say, "Thanks, guys." Seriously, for, because I know that a number of times I've been passionate about certain issues, and, not that we necessarily disagree on it, we might have different sense of, or perspective on how to approach it, or, but I do know that you all work hard and you're dedicated, every one of you, and I honor that. One thing I will say partly, and I came out here tonight really just to listen because I, I wanted to at least be present in, in a setting like this that gives opportunity for real debate, I, I shouldn't say debate, real discussion, in this case, of issues and concerns and ideas that people are passionate about. This exchange is critical. We've, I think in our, certainly our political environment and in our culture, we, we seem to have lost that critical thinking, that critical discussion, the, a real debate that isn't restricted by predetermined questions and predetermined answers, for that matter. And I would love to see this happen more often. I know it would be interesting to figure out a way to do it on larger issues. How does one determine a larger issue? Who determines it? Is it financial, certain size financial issue that's going to affect the community, certain number of citizens impacted, maybe their financial impact on citizens, the, the environment of those citizens, the lifestyle it will impact upon? Maybe somehow there could be thresholds that would, that would inspire, or I should say, trigger discussions like this that would be sort of debates, but back and forth, we need to talk to you. And I appreciate that we have the opportunity to do so one-on-one, and I've availed myself of that from time to time, and I, I like that, and I think that's important. But this is more important to me, the public forum. So thank you for doing this. Let's see if we can't figure out other ways to do it on, from time to time, on, on major, important, passionate issues.
Okay, is there anybody else that hasn't spoken, to come down and speak? Oh, Councilmember, sorry. Go ahead.
Michael, the, thanks for speaking, and Jim, too, and Marcia, also, about this issue of fracking. I think that, you know, what reveal, if you read the fracking decision, it's clear that what needs to change if we want to have some control over things is the state law, which currently is being, in my opinion, misuse to put the rights of a corp, a legal fiction over the rights of the people of the state of Colorado. But be that as it may, we need to, the only way to change that law is to get a statewide petition and change it. Unfortunately, what happened in this last election is we just made it a, an infinitely more difficult task to change the state constitution or the state laws. But nevertheless, you know, as we've seen from that excellent film last night with, about Martin Luther King, you know, if enough people get together and they just keep plugging away a long, long time, things happen. And so that's up to everybody who feels strongly about it to change it that way. Thanks.
Councilmember Pick.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I also am very concerned about the oil and gas industry and the environment. I am not ecstatic or even pleased that we're going to be fracking under Union Reservoir at all. I did listen to Governor Hickenlooper Saturday, and the mayor of Broomefield spoke, and is very concerned about the 40, 40 wells per site that are going to be in the residential neighborhood. And I've been thinking about this since Saturday, and I'm not happy with his remarks because he said it comes down to property rights. But doesn't it also come down to zoning? Why do we have a heavy industrial activity in a residential area, in residential zoning within 500 feet of people's homes? The property value and the property rights of the resident should also be taken into consideration by our, by our governor. And I do think that Longmont has looked at that pretty well. But this is an issue that is coming, and it's railroading, and I think that is what the people are upset about. The initial, the initial site plan, Broomefield wasn't happy with, but they weren't outraged with it. Then when it, when it just got out of control, that's when they were very upset, because their rights were overlooked for the, the heavy industrial rights. And I do think the people have the opportunity, and I do think that we need to stand up for that and have a voice in it. So, those are my thoughts.
Okay. Well, I think you, you have someone that's ahead of you.
Edna Lohman, 1314 Grant Street, Longmont. And thank you, Mayor Coombs and council members. I also wasn't planning to speak tonight. I was coming to support Mike, but I have so much love and caring for the St. Brain, and I'd spoken to you before about how once I saw a great blue heron and a mink sharing of fish on the, the banks there, and just how special that was. So, well, I'm fairly new here, as I've probably told you before, so I don't really know everything that goes on here. And, and I haven't really been paying that much attention to the flood mitigation projects that are being planned and studied. But Mike did tell me about the annexation plan and about the possibility of having the channel, the original channel restored, and that sounded like a good idea to me. So I started trying to educate myself about this, and I looked on the web, but I, I had trouble understanding all the issues and, and, you know, I was looking up split channel, and I was having trouble finding out exactly what that meant and where it was supposed to be. And so I just, I don't know if this is quite the right request, but I, I really enjoyed the study session that you had about fracking a few months ago. I thought that was extremely helpful. And so I just would like to suggest that perhaps we could have a study session before this is all done and over with. I, I think that there's supposed to be an Army Corps report coming out about the various options, and I think that would be a good time for us to have a study session, to inform people like me that are really struggling. I mean, one thing is that someone told me to look for a blue, a blueprint that was on the city website, and I did go look at that, and it wasn't, there wasn't anything there anymore. So there must be other people besides me that don't really quite understand but really still care a lot. So I'd just like to request if there's some way that we could have some kind of public review when the Army Corps report comes out. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. Ms. Lohman, if you get with Harold, I think Harold was going to, you going to address something? Thank you.
So, Mayor Council, as you know, we've had several study sessions on this topic. We've also had a lot of community forums where we have all the information, and so we can discuss these questions and what we're planning to do or what we're looking at doing with the community. We are going to have another session scheduled, March-April timeframe. We're still working on that, and that basically has all of our projects that we have underway or where we're thinking about moving forward with, and it's the same thing that we present to you all in the budget and the CIP process. So we'll do that. We'll also be happy to sit down with Ms. Lohman and go over more detail and answer questions specifically. But I wanted you to know, we have more public sessions on the way.
Well, and Harold, you might want to just go ahead, and since there's questions about, it's the St. Brain, St. Brain blueprint.
No, I, so.
Well, I mean, there's, there's, there's many plans that are going along, you know, in this area, so it's multiple plans that if you have the right term to put in the website, it'll pop right, right, right up.
Actually, the question, if you're looking at the flood recovery projects and the work we're doing, that needs to be searched utilizing Resilient St. Brain.
Right.
The St. Brain blueprint is different than Resilient St. Brain, although they interact with each other.
Interact together. So if, if you wouldn't mind just getting with her, give her some of the terminology.
We'll do that.
That might be some, might be helpful.
Okay, who else that hasn't spoken yet would like to come down and speak? Just go on down, state your name and address.
Go ahead and make your way down. Both.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Kurt Volkmer, and I live at 1522 Lincoln Street, Longmont. Very new to Longmont. November 7th, I closed on my home. So I'm very new. But I heard the subject about fracking and kind of interested me in regards, there was a lot of, obviously, interest about it and what all it involves and some of the fears and concerns over it. And I guess I just wanted to ask the city council a kind of basic question, and forgive me for my naivety, but does the council have the authority to allow or not allow that kind of activity within its jurisdiction? That's my question.
Yes and no.
Not the seat.
Okay, the yes part first, and then the no part. Well, we have our own city regs that we, that we did, you know, really well, and at first, we were sued by the governor, and, but we ended up, they stood up, you know, in the end, and we're, we won that legal battle. But that's not a total ban, it just gives us some control, some, of where they can have pad sites and how far away you have to be from people, and when they can get administrative reviews, and so it's, it's a real complex thing, but it did give us a lot more control than we ever had before, or any other cities ever had, or, so, yes, for that, we are pretty proud of, but it doesn't give us total control to totally ban fracking. So, would you like to add a few?
Just, just.
Oh, Councilmember Christensen.
We thought we did. We are a home rule city, so we thought we had the ability to ban fracking, not everywhere, just within the city limits.
Amen.
But apparently not. The Supreme Court does not think we have that right, so.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. In a nutshell, I look at it like this. The city has the power to zone, right?
Okay.
And we're allowed to tweak so long as we don't step on the state's toes. So the idea of banning an activity that's regulated by the state, we can't ban that. We can do things so long as it doesn't mess with the state's purview, if that makes sense. So our regulations say that you can't, you know, have heavy industry in residential areas, for example, but we can't go so far and say, "You just can't do it anywhere inside the city of Longmont." And so that's kind of where we're at at the moment. We've got regulations that say no to residential areas, and we've got a fracking ban that was ruled unconstitutional, and that's kind of where we stand at the moment, because people, of course, are still having the conversation, and, and obviously, you're the, I think, seventh or eighth person to bring it up tonight, so obviously, there's a lot of concern about it.
Well, being new, I thought I'd ask the question about authorization, because I, as an individual, being new to Colorado, new to Longmont, I didn't know whether or not you had jurisdiction, and I needed that kind of clarity first before I could ever discern whether or not this was a subject that, you know, as a city council, you guys could continue to pursue, or whether we needed to go to the state level to, to get the assistance there. And so I was just looking for direction, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carl Strope. I live at 1184 Winslow Circle here in Longmont, Colorado. I, I would just want to bring up a kind of an alternate viewpoint. I'm a communist, abolish the prisons, abolish property, abolish the state. But I just want to say that the reason fracking happens is because we drive cars. Longmont, so much of its development has happened since 1960, which is post-war, it's late capitalism, and it's automobile-based culture. Until that culture shifts, oil will always have a say. The state has never actually protected the rights of everyone. We celebrated Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and Black Lives Matters is marching right now, as is the Women's Front, as is Medicaid for All around the country, because the state is not designed to empower us. Longmont City Council is not designed to empower us, but to make us feel... Longmont City Council is not designed to empower us, but to make us feel like we have power. And that's a really cynical point of view. But I want to offer up that we need to shift our culture and really look at what Longmont is. We are based on the car. We are based on telling children that they must be in a certain place at a certain time. And we train them to be workers. We train them for college, which is not, increasingly not, helping their economic potential. If you look at the large scale of what we have, if Longmont is to be effective as a politically resistant force, which I could hope it would be, it would be because the people of Longmont recognize that we are something more than allowed to be by the federal state. We are human beings in a place, in a time. We can change everything. And to not think about fighting a system that is set against us. And I want the city council to know that we can be a politically resistant force. The nation-state was not inevitable. The city could have been. France won instead of Italy back hundreds of years ago. History shows that this is going to be constantly changing. Fracking is just an indication that this is not tenable. This will not last. Energy is not free. When I look out to the end of my lifetime, I don't know if I'm going to be in Longmont, but I'm here in Longmont right now. And I know what I want, and I know what I don't want. And I see that a lot of people don't want something, and it's being forced on them. And a lot of people want something, and they're being denied that, whether it's housing, whether it's affordable, healthy food, that's not based on, you know, the built-up infrastructure of trucking food into the city and then trucking the waste out. There are things we can change, but it's more about the culture and less about trying to get the city council to achieve something it's not designed to do, which is real political resistance to forces that affect us all, not just in Longmont, but around the world. And that's what we are, and that's what we can do, is just be people in the world, here and now, fighting for what we want. So that's my encouragement to you and to everybody that might hear this. It's bigger than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak? All right. I guess that ends our open forum. So now it's time for mayor and council comments. Is there any comments from... Councilmember Christensen?
I wanted to thank the folks at Silver Creek for... And also, the people who were on the committee to... For the Martin Luther King Day. It was the best one I've ever been to. It was really very interesting and very heartfelt. And Councilman Finley, and Councilman Peck, and Councilman Coombs, and Councilman Warren, I went, and I thought it was wonderful. So thank you for... Thank you to all the people who arranged that.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I also went to the Silver Creek Martin Luther King Day and was totally overwhelmed by how the passion. It was... I loved Longmont for what they did during that day. And I also want to thank you out there for your comments. We work for you. This is supposed to be a government of, by, and for the people, and I totally believe in the people. So keep pushing us, keep keeping us on the right track, and let us know when we're not. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to echo the comments at the Martin Luther King Day. The Silver Creek High School was an excellent... I thought the leadership committee did a great job, and everybody else, the multicultural committee, the speakers were excellent. I also want to put a plug in for, I don't know if anybody hadn't seen it, but I think it was one of the best movies I've seen in probably a number of years, is Hidden Figures. It's a story about three black women that were brilliant mathematicians that actually did pretty much most of the orbital calculations for the launch and reentry of the first orbit of John Glenn. But anyway, it's a very good movie, so I'd encourage people that maybe see it. If you can't afford it, wait till it comes out on Netflix. Any other comments from council? All right. City manager, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
City attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.